2021 City Council Meeting. It's nice to be back in person. This is our first regular council meeting in person for quite a long time. So it's nice to see all the smiling faces and to be back with my colleagues on council. Thank you very much. Mr. Hines, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Here.
Torenzi.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Deion.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Townsend.
Here.
Mayor Calendrino.
Here.
Thank you. Tonight, we do have two public hearings that are scheduled to begin at 8:00 PM for the 7811 Summers variance request and the caregiver ordinance hearing. At this time, I'd like to open up the floor for public comments for any items that are listed on the agenda. If anyone would like to address council, please step up to the podium and give us your name and address. And again, these are for items that are listed on the agenda. We'll have another period towards the end of the meeting for items that are not on the agenda. It doesn't look like we have any comments. Unfinished business, we have none. Consent business, council, you've been given your packets. There are several items listed under consent business. This is a relatively new thing we're starting. All matters that are listed under consent business are considered routine by council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion of an item is required, it will be removed from the consent business and considered separately. Does anyone from council wish to have any of the consent business items removed from consent and up for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent business items as presented.
Motion by Deion?
Support.
Support by Sakura. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes.
All right, let me jump ahead. That brings us to Mr. Hines for the Cassie Hines Shoes Cancer Foundation Glow Run, the 5K run. How are you doing tonight, Mr. Hines?
I am doing well. As you said, it's so good to see everybody in person and just being able to see smiling faces.
Absolutely.
We're glad to be back. This actually is our 10th annual, which is crazy to think that we're at that point in time for the Glow Run. And what we're before the council today is to ask for, the exception to be able to close Auburn Road from 7:30 to 8:00 PM in both directions, and then from 8:00 PM in the eastbound direction only to allow the runners to return because they will, and this will be just east of the Riverbends entrance to the path. Then it'll open up at 8:00, it will open up the eastbound side to allow, make sure that the runners can return safely into Jimmy John's where the entire race starts.
I know myself, and I believe our clerk, Lori Cook, we were both in attendance at the last one you did at Jimmy John's, and it was a really awesome event, well attended, and you were able to raise some good money for your cause. And it was just a really exciting event with, you know, being at night, it made it a little bit unique, I know.
We definitely appreciate that. We certainly want to make sure it is, first of all, a professional and very fun event for people to come to, families in particular, because Utica has a lot to offer. And I think it just highlights it when you bring it all down at one time. Usually, there's between 400 to 600 people that'll be here, so. And this year, we're kind of hoping for more because there's a lot of pent-up demand.
Absolutely. Chief Cody, did you have any concerns or questions for Mr. Hines?
I did want to comment. As you're well aware, this has been an event that's taken place in the city over a number of years. I have to compliment Mr. Hines. He has contacted me well in advance, notified me of this event and the goings-on, the dates and times. This has been a very insignificant event as far as the police department. We helped them close the roads. It's momentary, really, to get the runners across. It's a very good event. He's always provided the proper documentation and insurance forms to protect the city. And I always look forward to him coming. So from the police department perspective, we would love to see him back here another time.
Chief Folsack, any concerns from fire?
No.
No? Counsel, any questions for Mr. Hines? If not, we would be looking for a motion to approve Mr. Hines' event.
I'll make a motion that we approve Mr. Hines' event as presented. I'm looking for it on my screens, so I don't have the exact time. I believe that it's on September 18th, and you're asking for, from 7:30 to 8:00, for Auburn Road to be closed. Is that correct?
Correct. And then from 8:00 to 8:30, just the east, well, technically, it would be the westbound side.
Okay, and then from 8:00 to 8:30 to the westbound side? I'll make that motion.
Thank you for clarifying.
Motion by Torenzi.
Support.
Support by Ryan. Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Hines.
Thank you. Definitely appreciate it. Look forward to it.
Are you looking for volunteers? Do you want to put the word out?
I was just going to say, anybody who would like to come in. It is a lot of fun, and, you know, we actually, for all our volunteers, we have a hot dog and a beer for you afterwards, after the event's over. So by all means, just reach out to me directly, or you can go to our foundation website. And we'd love to have all the support we can get because it really is, takes a lot of people to pull this off.
Excellent.
But thank you. We do appreciate it. We love being here.
Look forward to it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, department reports from me. We had talked about forming committees where all the council people would be connected to either our departments, committees, or commissions. So I came up with a list, distributed to council to review. The final assignments are listed on your agenda item summary form. Mayor Protem Sakura, you've been assigned to police and DPW. Councilwoman Torenzi, library and municipal building authority. Councilman O'Donnell, admin, planning commission and DPW. Councilman Deion, building and assessing. Councilman Ryan, fire, historic district commission and police. And Councilwoman Townsend, treasurer and parks and rec. The concept behind this is hopefully, you know, in between council meetings, at least once a month, you'll connect with your department, commissioner, committee, get any updates that are necessary to bring back to council. And during our department reports at the next council meeting, to give a very brief update to council and the public about anything going on in those various organizations. No motions required. I just wanted to put this out for information. Does anybody have any questions, concerns? Excellent. Hopefully, this will be a new tool in helping us in our communications throughout the city and help us be more efficient in the way we get things done. Next item from my office is delinquent water bills. I asked Treasurer Paternoster to pull a report on June 16th, so these numbers reflect that date. At that time, there was $136,628.38 in delinquent water bills. That does not include 57, approximately $57,000 that had already been moved to taxes for the people that were delinquent for an extended period of time. This is an excessive amount that's owed to the city, and we really need to find a way, find some, firm up our policies and procedures in making sure that we're collecting the water bills because it's certainly not fair to the folks that have been diligent during these hard times and continue to pay their water bills on time. Mr. Paternoster, would you mind addressing us and telling us what the current procedures are and that we have in place right now?
Excuse me. Currently, the city's ordinance regarding delinquent water bills requires that we notify residents of shut-off when a balance is 90 days past due. So when we bill a customer for the month's water usage, they have approximately 30 days to pay it before it's due. If it's not paid by that due date, the ordinance calls for a 10% late penalty. And then 90 days after that, if it is still unpaid, the ordinance calls for us to notify them that their water will be shut off if payment is not forthcoming. Once the water bill, once the water service is shut off, the ordinance calls for a turn-on fee that must be paid together with the delinquent amount before the water service will be restored.
What is that, turn-on fee, Mr. Paternoster?
Forty-five.
Forty-five dollars, the clerk tells me. And if the balance is six months past due, then we place the balance on the summer tax bill. We notify them in the month of May that there's a balance that's subject to being put on the tax bill. They have, I think we give them 30 days to pay that. And if it's not paid, then it's removed from the water bill account and placed on the tax bill, where it becomes a lien on the property. That's the process that is currently in place. The shut-off notices were discontinued last spring as a result of the COVID crisis. And I don't think we've reinstated that yet. We did put, as you stated earlier, we did put a fair sum of money on the tax bills in June.
In June, okay. Mr. Lang, did you have anything to add to that, perhaps?
Other than water, shut-off is never a pleasant thing that we do. Throughout the tenure of my career, it's been a process that's been in place. Other than for the pandemic, it was, you know, waived for a short period of time. Although, you know, it might put some stress on some other items that people spend money on in their, in their life, it's actually been a pretty effective tool on collecting water bills, so. Some communities don't invite, you know, they don't do water shut-offs. It actually works pretty well. But in order to keep the system running and to be fair with the rest of the system, we have to collect their money.
Right.
Or the system's money, anyway.
Any comments from council?
I have a couple of questions. My question is, Phil, you were saying that if the water bills aren't paid by May, then they go on the taxes. Where you send them a notice and say you have 30 days to pay it. I might not get the exact verbiage, but you have 30 days to pay it, and then if they don't pay it, how far back do these water bills go? Are they 90 days? Are they 120 days? Are they six months?
So it's only those balances that are six months in arrears.
So six months and more?
At the beginning of May, we run a report and we look at all the balances that are six months or more in arrears. Those balances are put on the tax bill. If the customer is notified, and if the customer doesn't come forth with the money, then that balance goes on the tax bill. If it's less than six months past due, it's not going on the bill.
Do we do the same thing on the December taxes as well? So it's only once a year?
It's only once a year. We don't put any levies of our own on the winter tax, other than the property tax administrative fee. The winter tax is strictly for other taxing jurisdictions that we are collecting for. Now, I will state that there are some customers, some residents of the city of Utica who are on Shelby's water and sewer system. If they are delinquent, Shelby will ask us to put them on our winter tax. And likewise, there are some customers on our sewer system who live in Shelby. If they are delinquent, we will ask Shelby to put them on their winter tax bill.
Okay. My other question is, is what percentage of people, after you've sent out this notice, actually come in to make either payment arrangements or pay up what is delinquent? Just ballpark?
Honestly, I
That's not zero.
Haven't looked at that. No, some of them do, but I haven't looked at what percentage it was usually that's handled in the clerk's office, not mine, so I haven't paid too much attention. My concern was when they sent it to me to put it on the tax bill itself.
So when we send out the letter, are we offering a payment plan? Because obviously, you know, like, I looked at one that was $3,000, and I'm like, holy cow. You know, that, you know, if we offer, if when we sent that notice and we offered a payment plan, maybe we would get a little bit of response?
Well, if I might respond to that, when we were billing quarterly, we would send out shut-off notices, and we would offer a payment plan. But the payment plans required that you pay off that delinquent balance by the next, you know, you had three months to pay it off, and you had to remain current on your recent, you know, the next bills. We're now billing monthly, so a payment plan doesn't make much sense. Besides which, if you're that far in arrears, you probably haven't been making any payments. I mean, we do try to work with people when they have special circumstances. As you know, people come to the council and request payment plans for certain things. Unfortunately, what we've noticed is some of these people who end up on that shut-off notice, if they have difficult circumstances, they haven't contacted us prior to getting that notification.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
So, once the bill, the water bill, has gone delinquent and has gone to the taxes, that negates their water bill, brings the balance to zero.
That portion. It removes that portion from
Yep. So, in a hypothetical, would they then be able to receive water service? Or they need to pay a reconnection fee? And, or would you pay the balance and pull it off the taxes? And then how's that process work for someone that's received a shut-off and then taxes placed onto the, I'm sorry, the water bill placed on the taxes? What's the step thereafter?
If they've been shut off, they will have to pay a turn-on fee of $45 to get the water reinstated.
But their balance at the water department should be zero?
No.
No. It'll just be
Anything over six months gets put on taxes, but anything less than six months?
Then, well, they're shut off, so they want to be able to accrue any more usage.
Shut-off starts at 90 days.
Sure.
Tax, it goes to the taxes at the six-month mark.
Sure. But at some point, at some point, it will go to taxes because it's, shut-off happens first, then it has to go to taxes, so that at some point in time, you have a gap where you have no water usage. And then you have a bill on your taxes for your water. So in order to reenact, get it restarted, are you then paying the balance that's owed to the taxes from the water bill and bringing it down to a zero? Or are you starting at zero, brand-new, on your water bill?
Can you answer, Mr. Paternoster?
Um, I assume that doesn't happen too often.
Well
This year is different because of the pandemic, so.
This year was different. Normally, it is, under normal circumstances, it is possible that someone hasn't gone to a shut-off, and yet they have a balance that's more than six months due because they're continuing to make payments. It's when somebody stops making a payment that it ends up typically going on to a shut-off. Obviously, this year was different because we had stopped doing shut-off notices. But you would still, we only send to taxes that portion that's six months or older, so it would still leave some balance on the account.
Unless there's a shut-off.
Unless, yes.
Okay, understood.
I guess the question is, as I understand, your question is, at six months and it goes to the taxes, all of a sudden, you could have $3,000 on the books because you moved it on taxes. On our ledger in the city of Utica, goes to zero.
Only on the water billing account. On the general ledger, that balance came off and went to a different receivable account. It went from receivables from water billing to a receivable from taxes.
But I guess
So the balance is still there.
Is the person listed on that bill, or it actually goes to the homeowner or property owner?
Goes to the property owner.
Are they still liable for, let's say, they had $3,000 that you put on taxes. All of a sudden, it goes to taxes, that $3,000 is now on the tax books. Are they still responsible? Or they get to do this, and we start from zero, even though, okay, so when I sell my house, pay the bill?
So if it goes on to the tax bill, that tax bill is a lien on the property. If they fail to pay the property taxes to us, we send the tax bill delinquent to the county. The county will then collect. The county will pay us out of their revolving tax collection fund and make us whole. If, and then they will proceed to collect from the property owner. If the property owner fails to pay them, then the county will foreclose on the property. That's how it works. So we take it off of, we take it out of the receivable from utility bills account, we move it to a receivable from tax bill account. So the receivable remains on the balance sheet. When we collect the taxes, we debit cash, we credit the receivable, and then we're made whole.
Once we send the amount to the county, how long does it take for them to make us whole?
Month and a half.
Month and a half. So quicker than we would have got our money otherwise?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
And if the property owner has a mortgage that is being, and the taxes are being escrowed, the mortgage company escrows that funds from the property owner.
I know we've had, go ahead, Mr. Lang.
I think what Mr. Sakura was, maybe the answer you were looking for, so in the event of, if there's a renter and a property owner, the property owner is held responsible for the water bill. If the water bill gets paid through taxes, the renter, that's between the renter and the property owner. In other words, we're, we no longer have our hands on anything. Ultimately, our water is the responsibility by our ordinance. Even though you, as a renter, can come in and sign up for water, it's still, it's the sole responsibility of the property owner that the water bill gets paid. Likewise, I mean, I don't, I don't think that we have really any customers on shut-off or any, anyone that was ever shut-off for any real length of time, other than during like the bad foreclosure times. But those were houses that were vacated and empty and just pending looming water bills. Now, now with the, with the, with the debt that's out there, well, I think we're just looking at trying to be a little proactive and have a process in place because there's so much money to collect, so we don't know what's happening, is really what.
And I know, based on what Mr. Lang's saying, we've had some landlords come to the front desk and basically begging us to start shutting off water again because renters are running up the bill, but because we put a moratorium on shut-offs, that money can potentially go to their taxes when it's really the renter's responsibility because they're the ones that are consuming the water, right? So we had a landlord recently that was irate. I mean, he's raising his voice and making a lot of demands, so, yeah. Based on this amount, we have to take some action because it's just getting worse and worse. Any more comments from council? So I guess at this point, I would just be looking for a motion to reinstate our existing policies as far as shut-offs and moving arrears to taxes like we've done in the past. Now that, you know, all COVID restrictions have been loosened, you know, it's time to get our finances in good shape here.
I'll make a motion to reinstitute all our policies regarding water billing, water collection, sending water bills to the county when their past six months due at all.
Support.
Motion by Sakura, support by Torenzi. Any further discussion by council?
Will that include, I'm sorry, include also shut-offs?
Yes.
Not paying the, only because we had, like, specific guidelines, not?
Okay.
Right.
I include that in the motion.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, thank you, everybody. Moving on to council reports. Councilman O'Donnell, I know you're on the agenda for an update.
Yes, I sure am. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the, so, super quick, two minutes, on the 25th of June, I went to the Green Macomb Municipal Tree Survey Training as the designated "don't cut the trees down" guy. Gus decided to send me out there. It was very interesting. I learned how to use this mobile application, a phone app called like ArcGIS, I think. I actually kind of had a little bit of fun. I went out yesterday. I cataloged about 40 trees on Auburn, Cass, and, and Summer Street. Like I said, it was kind of neat, kind of interesting. You have to, the fields, the required fields are the location, species, tree size, condition, what kind of maintenance and needs, overhead utilities, land use, community name, that's us, and then a risk rating. So like I said, I did it for about 40 trees. It was kind of fun. And I do have a login for the app if any volunteers want to help out. Otherwise, I'll keep cataloging. But I'm a dork, you know, so I like this kind of stuff.
Excellent. And this is part of the effort of inventorying our downtown trees as part of the replacement for the ones that were, that are quickly dying, that are on curbs, right?
Yes, yeah.
Excellent, excellent.
Yeah, so there's also, you know, you rate it from, I think it's, I forget, like, dead or poor, whatever it might be, all the way up to excellent, right? And I think there's five in between. So kind of subjective rating. You have to notate if it is, if there's hardscape damage, right? If it's breaking the sidewalk or a parking lot, things like that. So it's fantastic data, and once we have a certain threshold of data, we can start running reports through the county.
Excellent. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Townsend, I believe you had an update for us.
Yes, I do. I have now held two graffiti committee meetings, resident graffiti committee meetings. The first one was a little disappointing, but I didn't get a lot of, I didn't have a lot of time to really prepare for it. It was, you know, a quickie meeting thrown together. The second one was very productive. We had probably about eight, nine people attend, two of which, one was former Mayor Noonan and current Mayor Calendrino. I want to thank them for attending because it really offered a lot of past and present knowledge of what's been happening with all the graffiti throughout town, what we've kind of allowed in the past, you know, how we've tried to stop it, things like that. A lot of great ideas came up. One of our first steps that we want to do is to kind of clarify and define what the ordinances are and, you know, what we can do as far as patrolling, define what is socially acceptable to be actual, you know, to actually be put in the tunnels. We want to clean up the areas around the tunnels and then whitewash the tunnels again and start from scratch. But before we do that, we actually want to come up with a plan first, you know, engaging local artists, engaging the youth, because we know a lot of it is the youth going out there, just getting crazy in the tunnels. We want to do a campaign to let people know that Utica isn't a place to just come and spray whatever you want. You know, we really want it to be more artistic. We don't want kids just coming spray painting profanity on the inside. And the only way we can really do that is through trying to get some of the local kids to together, art classes, things of that nature, to really try and educate people on the history of graffiti in Utica and just the history of Utica itself. Because the more they know about Utica and our history, the more that they will respect what, you know, what our downtown is. We'd also like to, we know that we're doing the DIA mural. We want to engage the DIA in this as well, maybe doing a tunnel day where we actually have live artists repainting the inside of the tunnels and then creating a little area where people can paint whatever they want, as long as it's not socially profane. And so we had a really lot of great ideas, and we're going to have another meeting, hopefully maybe by the end of next week, and I welcome anyone to attend that has ideas. Slowly, we're going to start covering up some of the bad stuff and still, until we can actually whitewash everything, but otherwise, we're moving along and it's going to be very productive, I think.
Thank you, councilwoman. That was a very productive meeting. I look forward to the next.
Thank you.
At this time, we need to begin our public hearing, so we would need a motion to enter public hearings.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adjourn the current meeting and adjourn to the public hearing.
Motion by Deanne?
Support.
Support.
Support by Councilman Ryan?
Sure.
I think he hit his hand up.
Yep.
Any discussion from council? Ma'am clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, thank you. All right, the first public hearing is the variance request for 7811 Summers, Manduzzi Dental. I think the Manduzis are here tonight. Could you step up to the podium and state your name and your business address, please?
Hi, I'm Dr. Chris Manduzzi. Office address is 7811 Summer Street. And do you want me to go into? Okay, yeah, so we had a meeting about a month ago where we were under the impression that we had to try to get the property rezoned to make some exterior changes, and as part of the meeting, we were told that that wouldn't really be necessary. There was some objection from a couple of the residents about that. They were in favor of the project but didn't want the zoning to change, so there was some discussion about just making it a variance for these minor exterior changes to take place. So I think that's basically what we're going to be addressing here tonight.
Do we have any comments from any of the public here, as this is a public hearing? No? Amanda, would you mind giving an overview of?
So basically, Manduzzi family was looking to put on a addition to the front of the building on Summer Street, basically enclosing in the current porch and then adding another small porch with an ADA accessible ramp. But the property is zone R1B, which is residential, where the use of an office of any kind or any sort of commercial use isn't technically permitted. So at first, the simplest solution seemed to have him rezone the property because technically you're not supposed to enlarge a nonconforming use of a structure. But some of the residents expressed some appropriate concerns that if it was rezoned and he ever moved or closed his business and sold it, a lot of other uses could come into that property. If it was zone C1, it could be, or C2, a variety of things. Then we looked at possibly O1, but again, they had similar concerns. So after doing some research, we kind of decided that the best move forward would be to grant him a variance to allow the enhancement of the nonconforming use of the structure. I know that sounds very complicated, very complex. We didn't feel that it would cause any issues to the surrounding residents, and basically what he's doing, it still looks like a home, it still fits with the look and feel of the area around it. If he was to ever sell his business, someone could buy it, and everything that he's doing would still make sense for a resident living in the house. So the variance would allow him to add on that covered porch area and then the ADA accessible ramp, everything that was on the site plan that was permitted or submitted to planning commission, and then do nothing else. And that's pretty much it. It basically is a structural variance, not a use variance of any kind. So again, the residents should be feeling at ease because nothing else can come in there other than another dentist office, I guess. That's pretty much the only thing that could come back into that building. So we felt like this was the best solution. The residents all expressed that he's a great, a great business owner, a great neighbor, and they definitely were in favor of the project. They just didn't want to see it rezoned with concerns what could happen in the future. So we felt like this was the best option moving forward, that allowed more space for his business, but also satisfied some of the residents' concerns, so.
And I was at that meeting, and if I recall correctly, your office recommended approval of the variance?
Yes, planning commission did recommend approval. I'm just looking for the exact language here. As I said, it's kind of a tongue twister. So it's a variance to allow Manduzzi family down to street located at 7811 Summer Street to alter their structure, which is currently classified as a nonconforming use of a structure. The variance will allow the owner to construct a 95 square foot addition to the current structure, as well as add a covered porch and ADA accessible ramp. The variance and associated changes to the structure are restricted to the site plan presented to planning commission on June 2nd, 2021, and that was recommended to city council.
Excellent, thank you. All right, one last call. Is there anyone else, anyone from the public that would like to speak to this matter? Any questions from council?
I, Mr. Mayor, I got a series of teeth cleanings once I had insurance to do so. Hashtag millennial. It's walkable, right? So I walked to my dentist appointment once upon a time that was expected, right? We didn't have to hop into a car for absolutely everything, we could walk places. So I understand that it is a nonconforming structure, but once upon a time, we wanted to be a town as opposed to a suburb, and that's how we got an office, so I plan on voting yes.
Excellent. Any further questions from council?
No, I completely agree. Dr. Manduzzi's a very welcome neighbor.
Absolutely.
Very, very much part of the community, always steps up when the city needs something. So it'd be, you know, it'd be a welcome addition, I feel.
And as Amanda mentioned at the planning meeting, there were a handful, maybe five, six residents in attendance, and they all spoke very highly of you and what a quality neighbor you are and what a great business you run in our community, so that speaks volumes.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Ms. Manduzzi. We'll be voting on this shortly, once we leave the public hearing. Our next item for public hearing is the MMMA caregiver ordinance. That's quite the tongue twister. Ms. McGrell, would you like to give an overview of that, please?
The intentions of this ordinance, which we spent several months really drafting and reviewing with the planning commission, and we've hired Steve Casson to look it over as, as planning, because we have restrictions with our current planners with regard to marijuana-related ordinances and engagements, is to move the growing of medical marijuana out of residential areas where people are putting them in basements and houses and really stressing the electrical and plumbing and creating a fire hazard and moving it into the industrial areas. So we've drafted this ordinance to attempt to do that. We've had, I think, a couple meetings with planning commission, Mr. Casson's reviewed it, I know the mayor's reviewed it, I've reviewed it. If anyone has any questions, it's a complex ordinance, but that's what the situation calls for.
And just to be clear, this, the state legalized personal growing of marijuana, so that's still, this does not impact that at all, you know, your, what is it, six plants or?
Yeah, you know, somebody can grow up to, I think it's 72 plants as a caregiver.
As a caregiver.
And if you have that in your house, it can be a real nuisance to the neighborhood. It can be a real fire hazard. I mean, many municipalities have had issues with fires that develop where people are growing that amount. I mean, we're not talking about the person who's growing one or two plants in their house, whether it's for medical or recreational. We're talking about the people that are growing, you know, 72 plants, and we're not talking about little spider plants, we're talking about six-foot trees. If you've ever seen any of the pictures of people who are doing this in residential homes, it's a lot, and it really puts a big stressor on our systems and is a fire hazard. So that's what we're trying to do, is to get it out of the residential areas and into the industrial and regulate it in that manner.
And it's for people who are licensed as caregivers by the state of Michigan.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Not personal growers.
I mean, you could still, yeah, I mean, there's still, if you're growing a cell to medical or recreational outside of this ordinance, then you fall into everything else we've been seeing happen with our licensing of the dispensaries and grow operations and labs and everything like that.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this? Council, any questions?
Many times what happens is, these houses that are used, it's renters come in, use the homes, the homes really in the end get trashed because of the smell and everything that's else that's involved in it, and then they move, you know, again, it's up to the property owner to visit and see what's going on, but it's kind of hard to stop them at this point. And I'm definitely in favor of doing this, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman.
Two quick points. Number one, I'm so burned out on talking about marijuana. Oh, my God. Number two. I like smoking. And number two, this is actually a great complement, complimentary issue to the zoning thing, right? So I had had, past tense, a gripe because there was some language in here that's, you know, only residentially zoned areas would have to worry about this. Well, technically, my house where I live, lay my head at night, is technically zoned industrial, right? So just another, I feel like every once a month, I say, hey, you know, we have this master plan, we're supposed to update our zoning laws, so this is my little nudge for that again. But the gripe I had is actually addressed in here, so it's good.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilman O'Donnell. Councilman Ryan?
Yeah, I can definitely say that this is very well needed for us. Being a member of the fire department, I can personally say that I witnessed issues that caused, especially on the fire hazard stuff, whether it be a residential fire or transformers exploding, lines dropping, causing other issues in the city. Our residential areas are not designed to have that amount of power pulled out.
Good point.
Good points.
All right, one last call to the public, if anyone wants to speak to this. It doesn't look so, so we would be looking for a motion to leave the public hearings and return to our regular meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Torenzi. Ma'am clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, thank you. All right. So let me get back to my agenda. At this point, we need to take a vote on the Manduzzi variance request for 7811 Summers. Is there any other discussion from council about this? We've already had a pretty good discussion. We've heard from the business owners and from our planning department.
Mr. Mayor, we will need a motion, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the Manduzzi, Dr. Manduzzi's office for the additions and the modifications to the property.
Motion by Deanne?
I'll second that.
Support by Ryan. Any further discussion from council? Ma'am clerk, a roll call vote.
Sikora?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes. Congratulations. I look forward to seeing what you guys do over there. Thank you so much. At this point, we would need a motion to adopt the MMMA caregiver ordinance.
So moved.
Motion by Sikora?
Support.
Support by Deanne? Any further discussion from council? Just so I'm clear, once we adopt this, then?
It needs to be published.
It needs to be published, right? Okay. And that's, how long of a waiting period is that usually? As soon as it's published, it's?
Right.
It's law, right?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. If there's no further discussion from council, roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes. Excellent. I'm glad to see this finally done. It's been a long haul. Thank you to our city attorney for all the hard work, and Mr. Casson, if you're listening out there, we appreciate all your assistance as well. Amanda, do you have anything for us from planning?
No, I would just add to Brad's comment about, you know, the master plan and some of the zoning ordinance updates now that you're the liaison or whatever the department.
But only in air quotes.
Feel free to email me if there's certain things you want to tackle. We can definitely bring it to planning commission and looking at moving that forward, so.
All right, you'll be sorry.
I'm happy to help in any way, but I always just say all the initiatives need to come from the city, so I'm just here to assist. But anything you need, like if you have my email, we can, you know, start.
Sounds great.
Now that we're back in person, it'll be a lot easier too.
Yes, excellent.
Couldn't really do a lot with virtual stuff like that, so, yeah, that's it for me.
Does anybody on council have anything more for Amanda? If not, I would like to excuse her. I know she has a couple of twins that she needs to chase down at home.
Thank God, only one said.
All right.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Amanda. You're excused if you'd like to leave. Assessing, no report tonight. Building, no report. Library, we get our first report from Ms. Catherine Francis.
Excuse me. Thank you. Well, there's not much to report at this point, so some readings are going on, and it's not over yet, so there'll be a lot more to report on this one.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to welcome Catherine.
You're welcome.
To the library. She's been an amazing employee for the last handful of years. Well-deserved promotion, and she's done such a great job. I'm just really glad to see that she's stuck with it, and now we have her at the top there, and I know that's more, more advantage for our young people. She does a great program for the kids, and our library's going to benefit with her leadership, so welcome aboard.
Yep, absolutely. I know I got a call from Ms. Francis today. She's donating a relic, an old laptop that she unearthed over there that we don't think has ever been turned on, maybe, and we're going to find a museum to take it somewhere. Thank you, Ms. Francis, we appreciate it. Chief Philsec, any reports from fire?
Yes, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to update council, city council, that we had a run January 1st, two gentlemen running through our city, one dropped dead of a full arrest heart attack. Fortunately, he was running with a Bloomfield Township firefighter medic who started CPR. Mike Ryan, Justin Hill, Lieutenant Fred Gibson responded, and he's living till this day.
Wow.
So, great work, Mike.
AEDs, our new equipment that the FEMA government provided us, their CPR machine, the Lucas tools, everything worked perfectly, and it's a success story. Don't get too many of those, so. And with that, I approached you, I think, last meeting to start looking for an ambulance. I came across a 2020 Horton ambulance that will fulfill our needs. It's a demo unit. With the pandemic and everything, we're looking at a new ambulance, possibly in 2023, possibly. I was surprised that they still had this one in stock. It fits everything we had. I had the mayor come out and take a look at it. I would like the council to approve purchase up to $230,000. I don't have the final figures yet because it's hard getting everything from the vendors on time for, but we did a budget $230,000, and I think we'll be right there. So I've been putting the guy off. I need an answer, so if he's getting kind of antsy, because this ambulance will sell. So with that, I would like to have a motion to make the purchase and have our treasurer start soliciting for financial financing on that ambulance.
So chief's looking for a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilman Ryan?
Support.
Support by Councilman O'Donnell?
Sure.
Any discussion from council? I'll add to what Chief said. I went out there. It's a little stark seeing it all white.
Yeah.
Because they don't have the wrap on it, you know, or anything.
It's going to be a little bit different. We're leaving it white. It's not going to be a red ambulance. It's just too costly to do that. But we came up with a, it'll be a different rendition for the City Utica. Yeah, it'll be a big star of life, and it's going to look good.
So it was definitely a beauty. And I know the guys that were out there kind of giving it the look over for you. You could tell how happy they were.
It's a, it's a, we've had, our oldest ambulance is a 2000 Horton, which we'll be getting rid of. And I'll come to counsel about that, too, on, that's worth, it's got some good worth to it still. But this, this particular model Horton incorporates a lot of safety features for our employees in the back of it. This one's equipped with airbags for the people that ride in the attendance area. There's not any other manufacturer that does that right now. It also has a second air conditioning unit for our mechanic, rather than running the air conditioning off the whole truck system. It's got its own separate unit, too. So it'll alleviate a lot of the problems that we have with maintenance. So...
And it's a four-by-four.
Yeah, it also has four-wheel drive for nasty days.
Excellent.
So, and the price, I couldn't believe the price, you know. So it's $200,000 for the ambulance and $30,000 for some of, most of our upgrades and the striping of it and everything. So...
I mean, I know nothing other than a Google search I did, and I can't believe 230,000. I mean, that's fantastic.
I know Shelby just bought, and they bought two of them. They're in a $275,000 range.
This isn't a typo? It only has 1,300 miles?
I was just looking.
Yes.
Wow. And those are just show miles. Those are just show miles. Wow.
Yeah, I'll tell you, Chief, you're good at a lot of things, but finding the right price has been one of the key features. And if someone were to ever steal you away, a feather in the cap would be a selling point alone.
So...
Well, we do have a motion and support. If there's no further discussion, Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Socorro?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, thank you. And thanks for all your hard work, Chief. I would like to add, in addition to the great work you mentioned, saving that gentleman who had the heart attack. I know we had another incident where we had a heart attack at Brookfield Nursing Home. I got a call from a resident there and firefighters, Farrell and Doro...
Mr. French.
Were very, the resident that called me was basically in tears and couldn't say enough nice things about firefighters Farrell and Doro and all our guys because most of them make trips over there to Brookfield all the time. And he was just thankful for the service that he's gotten in that incident and in previous incidents from Utica Fire. So you're making us proud, and we appreciate it.
Yeah, we're very fortunate, you know, with the FEMA funding and stuff, it's really put us back to where we needed to be because a lot of our stuff was really getting outdated. Our newest ambulance is a 2008, you know. So that's already, what, 13 years old? So...
Excellent. Anything else, Chief?
That'll be it.
Thanks again.
Good job. Thank you.
Chief Cody, please report.
I would also like to kind of follow up with a little bit of an acknowledgement. The situation described about the man that went down with the heart attack, I don't think people quite understand the situation there and the urgency. This person went down jogging with a friend in the city, and our echo unit made it there before police units, okay? Councilman Ryan was there. He had deployed, I believe it's a Lucas device, which is a compression device that you literally attach to the body that begins compressions. That along with the AED helped bring this guy to life. And from my perspective, when my police show up and I'm reviewing body cam footage, absolutely touching, touching situation to see this. This person literally revived on the scene. I've never seen that in my 30 years of law enforcement. So I had contacted Councilman Ryan, and I told him, I said, that was remarkable, okay? The council, you got to thank yourself for this. When we come to you with these plans and we're spending money, when an echo unit can make it to a scene of a heart attack before a police officer and render aid to the point of saving a life, whatever money is spent, obviously, at that point, it's not even a blip on the radar screen when you can see from the footage how real life this affects people. Our police units were at the hospital the following day. One of the ER doctors happens to be the one that had received that patient when he came in. And he came to our police officers and said, who are the people on that run? They saved that guy's life. Had it not been for the quick reaction, this would be a completely different story today. Take into consideration, we have a person that's in shape, running. I mean, this is the last person you'd consider to have this situation. It was the echo unit, it was the equipment that we put in place, and obviously, the planning of the fire staff to be there and be available, the dedication of the people involved. So I just, I don't want to play it off. This was a big deal. So acknowledgements. Councilman Ryan, that was amazing footage, really, truly amazing. So again, I applaud you all for all your efforts. And when we come up here and we bring you all these quotes and we're looking for new equipment, you see them actually in process of saving someone's life, it alters you. So give your, all of you a great round of applause because it really paid off. And it's good to see everything come together. So good job. Onto other business. I guess I just want to notify residents. Obviously, this is vacation season. Make sure and communicate with your neighbors, notify them. If you have a watchful neighbor to keep an eye on your property, if you have an interest in having the police have extra checks on your property, please contact the Utica Police Department. We will do that. So just keep us, keep us in mind as the summer vacation season continues into full swing, we are here to help you and keep an eye on your property. So keep us in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Lang, DPW report.
Yes, Mayor and council, three items on the agenda tonight. All requests for purchase or aid. Kind of switch gears here. I'm here to ask to purchase something used, but it'll still service our needs. The, and all three of these items are related to the water and sewer department. Public Works Department is here tonight to ask for support to purchase a now surplus Vector from the township of Shelby. This purchase has been approved by their board, and I'm here tonight, I've actually prompted you on this item many times. Actually, we've been trying to get this unit for a couple of years. It's, it's only about 10 years newer than our current unit, but it's, it's a complete different series, which is still the series that they're using today. I don't want to downplay it at all. It is, it's an older unit, but the price reflects, it's, you know, that, it's still in a far better shape, and it will service our community for a minimum of five years going forward. The current unit that we have is well beyond its life expectancy. It's a 1985, extremely rusted, older series. We have some issues with it where it can be even a little bit not so pleasant to our operators. There's sometimes some issues where sewage can spew around. But so we have, we have been just, we've been bubble gum and band-aiding this unit. It can be, it has some usefulness to someone else once it leaves the city. And I'll talk to you about that, I think, next month. But the idea is to ask council for approval to buy this unit from the township of Shelby in the amount of $35,000. But I'd also like approval for the, a total amount approved for expenditure of $40,000, an additional $5,000 to, there's some components on it that need, there's actually a tube that's about $13,000 that's rusted out or has some rust in it and repair marks. We'd like to buy the, buy that part and kind of upfit it a little bit for our needs. Just to give you an idea of the, you know, of what the unit can do for us, it's to replace it, their unit that they replace it with costs $400, $5,000. So $40,000, even though it's, you know, an older unit, it's a far upgrade from what we're using right now. I'd much rather be here in front of you asking for a brand-new unit for us, but with the health of the water and sewer system at this point, this is a good, a good fix to hold us over for a while. And we should get some, some good life and good use out of it. So Shelby Township wasn't even really overly thrilled about getting rid of it. They thought about keeping it for a backup. We actually operate very well with what we call our mutual aid pact. We kind of back each other up, and specifically with Factors. So this, you know, likewise, if this one needs to go down, we're able to use theirs in an emergency, and they can use ours. So it kind of works out real well. They're already trained on it. So with that being said, you know, it has to come out of the equipment line item 592-536-981000, of which I talked to Mr. Pat and Oster. There are funds available that can be utilized for that purchase.
And if I recall correctly, we did pre-approve making this purchase up to that dollar amount. We just didn't know, we didn't know at the time that this was going to be the purchase we made.
Yes. And actually, I was, I had asked council to kind of wait until the township of Shelby was aware of it.
Right.
It was something that we've talked about inner, with, between staff, but I like to be very courteous. The same with you. If we were going to, you know, look to put up something together that we inform you as council before you hear about it on the street.
Right.
So that's what that was about, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. So Mr. Lang is looking for a motion to approve the purchase up to $40,000?
So moved.
Motion by Deanne?
Support.
Support by Torenzi. Any discussion from counsel?
I had dark hair when we bought that last unit. So...
You said '85, Ken, not '70.
Councilman Ryan, what were we up to in 1985?
I, you know, I was not even a thought.
The beauty of it is you still have it.
Yeah, I still have it, but not the same color.
Oh, boy, there you go.
All right, guy.
If there's no further discussion...
You're still young. You came into the world with none. You have age.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Socorro?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, thank you.
And we thank you for that. We appreciate it. That'll be very helpful for us. Thank you. Second on the agenda is the request to engage our engineering services for a risk and resilience analysis, assessment, I'm sorry. Risk and resilience assessment is mandated by the EPA, and it's more specifically related to current weather affairs and different, not so much terrorist activity, but the different phenomenons that we're seeing in the weather. And with the flooding and the hurricanes and things, and the EPA has decided much the same as they did earlier with our vulnerability assessment that I wrote years and years ago, they now are requiring us to have a risk and resilience assessment. And basically, it's a roadmap or guideline as to how it is we would still provide water service and sewer service or services, essential services related to water and sewer to the community in the event of a natural disaster or unnatural. So that being said, I need to, we need the help of the engineers to put that information together that's outlined in their proposal. They're looking to, not to exceed cost of $4,900 to put this assessment together with myself working with them. And the expenditure would be paid for out of an engineering line item 592-536-821000. Unfortunately, this is one of those, you know, again, that coin word, unfunded mandate, but it's part of doing business, and we, it's not optional. We have to complete it.
So Mr. Lang is looking for a motion to approve a cost up to $4,900 to engage the engineers for this study.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Torenzi, support by Socorro. Any discussion from counsel? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Socorro?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes. Thank you. And Mr. Lang, last but not least?
Thank you for that. Last is also water, water and sewer related, has to deal with our, basically, our meter reading equipment that we can, that we use to collect our data to, associated with our water and sewer bills. Currently, we are running on a program that was purchased early on in my career. Probably within the first year, I think, we opted to go to a remote meter reader, excuse me, meter reading system. And we have been, that's been like in excess of 16 years. I've been here 18, so it could be that old. So we're, and we're still operating on that old meter reading equipment. It's now, one of the units has failed, and it's now at a point where the software isn't going to be supported soon, and the license agreement is up. We've known about needing new equipment for a while. We've just been kind of, again, due to the health of the system, we've been just trying to nurse ourselves by. And we're finally to a point where we would like to engage in some updated meter reading equipment before we have a total failure and can't read meters at all. With that being said, the best system for our needs is the Neptune 360 AMR software system with the MRX 920 mobile data collector and a R900 belt clip transceiver. So the data collector, just to give you an idea, the data collector is basically a computer that has a, like a Wi-Fi signal on it or a data, it collects data. We, throughout the city, every, every meter in the city in our system has a radio transmitter that's transmitting a signal. The data collector actually, they each have like, and forgive me, but they have their own identity, if you would. Maybe it's an IP address. I don't know. I'm not that guy. But they have their own identity. These, I got guys that are, so I'm not going to pretend. But they, each meter has its individual ID. The data collector has an ID associated with, that it's looking for, that the route is downloaded into. We go out, we drive that route, and the transmitter transmits, the receiver receives, collects all the data. We come back, we download it into the system, and then BSNA and our office people take care of processing the bills for us, as well as re-reads and things like that. But, so that being said, that's the data collector. The software is just that. It's the software that lets us do all of that. And for you software people, you can describe it better than I can. But it's necessary to make it work. And the R900 belt clip transceiver, what that is for, that's a useful tool that is used in the field rather than this, than the laptop. It's a belt trip, excuse me, a belt clip transceiver in the event that we need to do a reread, and it's just one or two reads. The office staff can take that. It's basically a reading device, and it's used for when we put a new meter in service. You actually use that to, to pair the meter with the new, with the radio. So it's, it's kind of like a, it's a tool. The nice thing about that tool is it can also aid in the event that the data collector goes down. We can read routes with it as well. So there's a bit of a backup there. So, and I know it's a little bit maybe complex what we've got written out here. So what I'm looking for tonight would be the approval for the purchase of the MXR 900 mobile data collector at $7,586.21 with the one-year warranty, the R900 belt clip transceiver, one-year warranty at $2,758.62, and the first year of software at a cost of $2,800. They waived the $3,000 setup fees. It's kind of weird to me that the second year is going to come in at $3,400, and the third year will come in at $4,000. That's just how they're doing it. So, but we only pay, from what I understand, we only pay the hardware costs and the software costs. Next year, we will come back, or I'll budget for a $3,400 software expenditure, and the third year, it'll be a $4,000 software expenditure. That being said, that it's a three-year contract. And the other information that's important to know, when we went to the meter reading system that we're currently on, we updated the entire community with new meters. At that time, we selected Neptune. Neptune is a proprietary product, so, and this is their system. It's a proprietary item. When we made those selections, we pretty much dedicated to stay with Neptune. If we wanted to make any changes, which could come about any, you know, at any, anytime you want to change all the meter reading equipment and, and the, the actual meter head... actual, uh, meter head itself, or change out the entire meters in the system, but this is the best thing going and really for what it does, uh, you know, we're looking at more like eleven thousand dollars and probably, you know, the, the software and hardware will last us quite a while, so, approval for that would be, uh, appreciated, same, um, line item, five nine two, five three six, nine eighty one, zero, 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 and that should leave us at least in really good shape for meter, meter reading for quite a while. Please, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the request for, uh, Mr. Lang.
Motion by Deion.
I'll support.
Support by O'Donnell, any discussion from council?
So we need the first year of software at twenty-eight hundred?
We totaled it right here, Lori and I did. Yes, thirteen, we, we had, Lori and I actually totaled it up, Mr. Lang there.
Yeah, I wish I would have, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So I was just.
Thirteen thousand, one hundred forty-four dollars and eighty-three cents for the first year and then, like Mr. Lang indicated, he'll come back and he'll budget the year two and three.
Yeah, I think if we just adopt a three-year contract tonight and then I can just budget the years, the consecutive years at that price, then we should be fine and we can hold them to those numbers as well.
Okay. Make that party motion.
I will amend the motion to, um, Mr. Lang's recommendation for the conclusion of the additional years for the service contract.
Support.
Motion by Deion, support by O'Donnell.
So what happens when the service contract expires, we have to get a new service contract, there'd be another three-year contract, you write right around the same price?
Yeah, I mean, there could be software changes by then or some, who knows?
Okay.
You know, we'd like to think that the data collector, because this is new, that's kind of the nice thing, we've actually skipped a couple generations over, you know, like the current generation of, of, of meter reading equipment is nearly seventeen years old, there's probably been a couple of other, uh, generations in the middle, we've skipped all that and this Neptune three sixty is new, it's the latest and greatest, so hopefully that will get us another fifteen years. What we're looking at going, you know, it's like any software.
Okay.
Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, thank you. Anything further, Mr. Lang?
The only other thing that I'll add is, and there was, there was some questioning, um, and, and, um, right now, barring any difficulties or problems, we should be in the park to, uh, renovate the path, the interior path walkway, uh, sometime in and about, sometime in and about the twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh of this month, so within a couple of weeks.
Oh, cool.
And I, you know, I stress sometime, it could be, you know, it could be pushed over to the first week of August, but right now, I did get a call, um, and they're, they're tentatively looking at like about the twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh, so in a couple of weeks we should be there.
How long will it be inoperable?
I.
Week?
I don't even think that long.
Oh, good.
I don't think that long, you know, if the community's listening though, and I, I do, I want to go through the interior of the park and maybe post some, you know, tentatively under construction soon, you know, part in our dust, something like that, just to give you an idea, uh, because we are going to really want, you know, if people can stay away from the construction area, which it's a lot of the park, give us a couple of days and I think we'll be in really good shape, so.
Good news.
That is good news.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, and we thank you for that as well, that's, that'll really be a nice upgrade to the park.
And Parks and Rec really helped on that too.
Yeah.
We appreciate their, their help.
Um, that's, other than that, you know, I mean, we need some sunshine.
Yes, we do.
That's for sure, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lang.
Appreciate your help tonight, thank you very much.
Mr. Pat and Oster, anything from the treasurer? Do you have any, anything to report?
If you could say no.
I have nothing for the agenda, however, I did want to, uh, alert the council and the residents that, um, we normally would have been adopting new water and sewer rates in June, we had, we missed that deadline, had hoped to have them ready for this meeting, again, that did not happen, so we are hoping to have them in place for the August council meeting for the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Clerk, anything from administration?
No, sir.
Ms. Kearns, Parks and Rec.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mayor and Council, um, I am here seeking approval for, uh, the road plans, traffic for the gasoline alley, um, event on August eighteen, no, August fourteen. With, uh, most of the rec here, um, it's going to be the fourteen from eight to four. And those are our plans for the traffic and parking map.
She needs to go to the podium.
Oh, yeah.
Hi, um, so I'm here seeking approval for the, um, gasoline alley on August fourteenth from eight to five, um, I have submitted the, um, traffic and parking map for approval for the road closures and for the, um, parking issues for that particular, um, event. I'm just seeking approval.
Rick, do, would you like to add anything? Basically, the format, the footprint, I think it's pretty much the same as it was in years past, is that right?
Yeah, it's, it's going to be, uh, uh, the same as it's been, the only difference is going to be on, on Auburn Road here by, uh, 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 the locker room where the road is one-way now, so that'll be adjusted. I'm going to shut the road down for local traffic only at Hawn, that way we won't have, you know, because of the construction on Vandite there and the, and there's so much, there's so much more traffic and even though it's a Saturday, we're going to try to make just the local people come into town, because, you know, remember, remember, Auburn Road here will be shut down at the locker room all the way to the bridge and then we'll have, on this end by the, by the, uh, ballpark, we're going to have, uh, uh, traffic directors and that'll be shut down, local traffic, so we'll allow our patrons in, you know, the show cars will come in on the west side and be, be staged and, and, and on the, on the, on the east side, they'll be staged off of Cass and your, and your, your parking lot will be coming, there'll be two entrances, one by Gus's house, that'll be a one-way and there'll be a security guard man there, so they can only come in one way.
I'm a caller, yeah.
Little, little issue that, and this year we got, you know, the ballpark's having a, uh, all of a sudden they're having two games instead of one, so we've got Andy to back up a little bit, I shut the show down a week, an hour early and I'm going to coordinate with his, his people, parking people and American Cancer Society, because they control the parking lot, uh, for the car show, so we'll get that, you know, I just don't want it to be a cluster, because you know, sometimes on a Friday when you come down here, you can't park, because there's a bunch of kids down, don't know what they're doing, so that's not going to happen on our show.
And Rick, I don't know, I talked to Megan, your daughter, I don't know if it got to you, I did call Dana over at Jimmy John's.
And I'll get with Dana, because that way with her.
Well, I've already talked to her.
I know, but I'm going to, I want to get her organized with the Cancer Society, so you know there's going to be people coming in before four o'clock?
Yep.
And we're going to have traffic coming in and out and I want it organized, I don't want them to stop for five minutes to discuss where they're going to park and what they're going to do.
Right, right.
You know, because that way we, we don't want traffic all the way backed up to, to fifty-nine or Utica Road.
But Dana said Jimmy John's staff will work with you in any way you need.
I know, I, I don't have any problem with her, she's really good, but if you have any other questions, I can help you out.
If I might, uh, I know you and I spoke and I know we talked a little bit about shutting down, um, Cass Avenue, possibly a hard shutdown to Summers, is that still a consideration or, uh, what, what's your feelings on that?
Well, no, because we've got, we've got traffic, they, they can all turn left, but we don't want the bulk of them coming down, we want the show traffic and, and the local patrons to be able to get to their addresses and get to all the businesses, we don't want to shut the businesses down.
No.
You know, the bars are going to, are going to, are all going to participate in the show.
Yeah.
So we don't want to show, have any conflict, any of the businesses, they're going to operate as normal.
Okay. Because the only thing I would suggest is if we did something, where we had some type of, um, if you had some of your, um, event people stationed at Summers, um, and I, I know we had also discussed at Cass and Hawn, road closed ahead signs for people coming south, that way they have an opportunity to exit out to the surface street of Vandite at that point and once they come down to Summers, that's kind of like their last bail.
All, all, you'll see advertising signs, big A-frames, and what I've done is I've modified all those A-frames to where as the, the week, the day, the night before the show, I'll move all the A-frames in position and all the traffic will be able to see there and, uh, the DPW will give me all the, all the streets blockages, you know, and I'll, and I'll have some, some orange cones too.
The only thing I'm trying to prevent is people getting down to Auburn and Cass, not part of the vent, not part of the businesses, and now we got a U-turn situation trying to take place from there, so.
No, it's one-way at, at, at Hogs Hall.
And Cass, yeah.
Yeah, right there, they can get out to Vandite right there.
Yeah, okay.
The only, the only situation I have right now is the only ugly part of town we got is at the locker room, the cement, if we just dress that up a little bit somehow for the show, I mean, I got the locker room on board, you know, they're going to be one of the food courts, we got the Shamrock we're going to use and Baldoon's, everybody's got outside vending, you know, so we got, we got the restaurants pretty much handled, nobody's going to hurt this trip, so actually it'll be a good day for them and if we draw like we drew before, we'll be all right. Another thing I've implemented and I've talked to you chief about it, is that when the cars come in, they're going to have to park for the duration, we're not allowing anybody to move their car until after the fifty-fifty, when the crowd's gone, because we had it in situations before where all of a sudden I got to leave to go to a, a wedding or leave to this, they're going to be told as they come in, they have to stay for the duration or they have to park, I have two different areas, one east, one west, where they can park and get out, so.
Are you anticipating to utilize, uh, Port Johnson?
I've already called, uh, Michigan Portable Toilet, I figure we will use, we're going to use the, a library, police department, my building and six other jobs.
I know that that is a really difficult commodity to get over.
Yeah, she's already, she's already agreed to six of them, so I'm on that, so if there's any, you know, anything else that you guys think I should do, I need all the help I can, I need all the volunteers, I expect to see each and every one of you there, you know?
I'm there already.
I know you are, Gus is here.
I've already been committed.
You know, I'm expecting twenty-five hundred.
I'm about, has she escaped? I'm being committed to that.
No, he's, uh, he does all right as far as get, you know.
A little shy, so.
No, not at all. But, uh, no, it, it, I, as long as we don't have rain, cross your fingers, no rain, we're having all the rain in July we can get, you know, so. And I've been out begging, so we'll have, we'll have some nice cars, so.
I think these nice people are probably looking for a motion and sir, I'd like to make a motion to approve the car show as presented by these fine folks.
Motion by Deion, support by O'Donnell, any discussion from council?
It's good to have you back.
Indeed.
Absolutely.
Remember, I'm seventy, you don't know how long you're going to have before.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, look forward to it, Rick, thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you guys, I appreciate it.
Good job.
Winn, anything else from Parks and Rec?
Yes, actually, I just wanted to update you on the community garden, um, it is far further than I thought we would ever be, uh, at this point, so, um, we are about this close to having the whole front of the area over at Pioneer Park, um, filled with beds and we've actually had already some vegetables ready to roll, so, uh, it's very exciting. If you haven't stopped over there, please stop over there, take a look, um, Councilwoman Sherry, thank you, or Townsend, thank you for, you know, coming over and your help.
Oh, yeah, it's very exciting, it's very exciting, if you haven't been down there, you know, just on a Saturday, you should, because there's people that are curious, there's people who are coming and wanting to see what's happening, there's people coming wanting to plant things, shovel things, it's, it's really amazing, it really is, it's.
It's amazing, so.
I've enjoyed my time that I've spent there and I don't even garden, really, like, I'm, I'm just like a hauler, you know, I'll mulch it or whatever, but.
And we still have a pile of, uh, wood chips with, uh, uranium on them.
So you guys want to see me at like ten AM, I work midnights, I mean. I'm obviously lacking in the beauty sleep, so let me in on the slate.
I don't know, I was there at like two o'clock when you were supposed to be there.
That was on July fourth.
That's true, and I actually want to also thank, um, Bill Lang here for the wood chips and soil that he's donated, um, for the, for the garden as well, so. It's coming along.
Yep, yep.
Great job.
Very fun.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our city attorney, Linda McGrail, anything to report?
Nothing to report today.
All right, well, at this point in the meeting, it is communication from the public for anything that is not listed on the agenda. I see we have a few faces here. Jessica, step up to the podium. If you could give us your name and address?
Sure, I am Jessica Spiegel from four six one five two Starett Street, um, I have two things, one thing I've brought up at previous meetings, um, I had a question, you guys were talking about zoning and, and things like that, um, four six one seven five Starett Street is a home medical facility and I was still wondering about that operation, if that was still like allowed, we have a lot of trouble with traffic in and out of there and then we do have a lot of, I'm sure you guys know, ambulances and things coming up. It's, it's an existing home.
Yeah, it's a group home.
It's regulated by the state.
Is it? Okay, okay, um, the second thing that I had was, um, in two thousand and nineteen, we, I had, um, come to the meeting and we had discussed a painting on the side of D N S Barber Shop, which we approved and then I came to the DDA, um, with the same painting and that was also approved and then, um, some things happened, I guess, where wasn't, I think maybe Frank's son was in, in agreeance with what was going on and then COVID kind of hit, so everything was kind of a mess, but, um, I brought with me that approved drawing and then I brought another drawing and I know the city's probably not in a financial situation to move forward with any of those, but I just wanted to bring it and share it and keep me in mind for any future projects possibly, so I was going to share that if that's possible.
You know I'm going to be hitting you up.
Yeah, the wings still gone a while, I.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind me interrupting, so Jessica was the one that drew the wings on the entrance to the tunnel, if you don't know, there's the two sets of wings on either side, uh, they look really great, they get a lot of photographs taken next to them, so I know that, you know, that they are very well-liked and she's done a great job with those.
So this is the, the one that city council voted on and the DDA voted on to be painted on that barber shop and I think we had a contract possibly, um, verbally agreed on, but I don't know where we stand on that, so, um, I upgraded that drawing and it's, so it's the same theme, it's a music theme, um, has a lot more details on it, so I'm just going to share it, it's Cory Gummer proud, um, it's on the stage.
Which one was the original, was this one the original?
The one that's painted is the one that they voted on.
Oh, okay.
To go onto the wall.
I think we've just been calling.
I am, so.
If you need a stick figure, assistant.
A stick. Then we're going to have to figure out how we're going to give the artists little sections in the tunnel. We want to do the live.
I didn't know there was those paintings, but I'll come.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, like I said, if you need someone to help with stick figures, this guy, don't make it ten in the morning or on holiday.
Or Fourth of July.
Busy those days.
You know what, ju- just coordinate at your schedule around tops, it's the best way to do it.
You don't mind. Yeah, this stuff's crazy expensive, I know you used it, how much was it per gallon for you, do you recall?
It was a hundred dollars.
Yeah.
That was the graffiti?
Yeah, and it needs to be rolled on, so it can't be sprayed, because I think it's a. Yeah, I don't, I don't believe it can be sprayed, but I sprayed the tunnel with seven gallons when I, when I washed it and that was just regular paint, I, I imagine that if you were to roll it, it'd be much thicker and much, uh, more hardy application than a spray.
How's that holding up, Mr. Lang, the anti-graffiti paint on the wing, on the wings in the tunnel, have you had to go hit that recently?
Uh, not recently, but we have.
It's still resisting, it's still allowing the graffiti?
I don't remember if there, if there was like a little residual that stays there, but it's far better, you know, that's a far better paint product than not using.
Right, right.
I don't remember if there, if there was like a little residual that stays there, but it's far better, you know, that's a far better paint product than not using.
Right, right.
I would like to read one story off, and like I said, it was, so was somebody, it was during the food truck and then it was down there and somebody was taking a picture and one of the guys that was doing the owl in the tunnel, he's a real good graffiti artist.
Mr. Patterson asked if you could just, just so we get you on the cable broadcast.
Sorry, I don't know, we were just talking about the top coat, am I close enough?
Yeah.
That's really all we have, I don't know.
Excellent, well, thanks for bringing those. As you know, we're, we have a DIA mural that's being done on the fire station wall right now, so we don't really have any plans for a mural yet, you know, what's going to be next, but we'll definitely keep you in mind.
Yeah, since we kind of already had it.
Right, right. Thank you so much. And I love the new rendition. A lot of motion, a lot of stuff going on there.
I didn't color it in, it's pretty negotiable, but, you know, colorful.
Yeah, I like it.
I like the colorful one. I like the new one without the bulgy eyes though.
Yeah.
The eyes are a little overpowered.
Also, yeah.
I love the curved.
Very energy, but.
Scale, music scale.
What do you call them?
Scale, isn't it?
Is it?
I know, I should know, shouldn't I? I looked over, I was like.
What do you ask me?
The thing to note, you write to note size.
Scale, isn't it?
No, it's not the scale, scale is A D.
The staff.
Yeah, what do you call the lines?
Bar, is it a bar?
Bar, bar.
Yeah, I mean, weren't you in the band?